Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, September 15, 2020, and we're here for a work session. And as always, we're going to start with the A Pledge of Allegiance. And Ken, can you please take the lead to work?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. And we have two announcements today, so I'm going to get right into, oh, actually, we have no announcements today. We're going to get right into the first discussion, which is a discussion surrounding amendments to the New York State Open Meetings Law that came down this week from the governor's office. I've asked Deputy Town Attorney Dan McCormick to come in this morning and explain the change and how it may affect open meetings law here in Riverhead. The governor did not sign the emergency open meetings law, and now everyone is required to be in person. However, the board can make an alternate, alternate, alternate decision and move forward with possibly a resolution. And so we have our Deputy Town Attorney, Dan McCormick here. Dan, can you please go forward?
Sure. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I think we have copies.
I actually prepared my own guidance document and roadmap for you folks.
David, is this state resolution up?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, great.
I made a nice, large font for me to read.
I'll press it down if you want.
Thank you. Okay, as the supervisor has indicated, Governor Hochul did not extend the video conferencing minimally restricted rules as of September 12th. So as of September 13th, public bodies must conduct public business via in-person meetings that are open to the public unless the public body utilizing, the town board as an example, actually via a public hearing process passes a local law authorizing video conferencing, but subject to additional requirements. And these came back, these actually came down back in April, but the governor's order was extended by executive order regarding the previous video conferencing status. That law was passed in roughly April 9th of 2022. It is now in effect as of September 13th. Absent again, though, another executive order, which may or may not happen, given our fall season coming up at this point. Hopefully, that's not the case this year for all of us. But just to go through the requirements, I prepared that roadmap as I indicated. To conduct video conferencing going forward, a minimum number of public body members constituting a quorum must be physically present at the same physical location. So for our purposes, town hall, town board meeting, at least three members must be physically here to conduct a video conferencing or hybrid session, both in person with the public and via video conferencing. That means, of course, up to two members could be utilizing remote access locations to video into the meeting. Now, that particular premise is subject to the following additional requirements, as you can see in the roadmap. That public video conferencing must be again made available to the public, including login instructions, as we've been doing previously. Secondly, and most importantly, as of the April 9th statutory revisions, there now must be a determination of extraordinary circumstance that necessitates one or up to two town board members or other public body members, which necessitates remote access as opposed to in-person. So the traditional, of course, would be, God forbid, an illness, caregiving responsibilities, disability of some kind, or any significant or unexpected factor or event that precludes the member from actually participating at the named physical location. Now, those extraordinary circumstances have to be codified by the town board or the public body in a written document pursuant to written procedures. So that would be part and parcel if the town board or any other public body in the town wishes to go forward with this. We'd have to establish written procedures and codify those so everyone is available, excuse me, everyone is on notice of what their extraordinary circumstances would be and how they could avail themselves of those particular options. As we've done in the past, all meetings must be recorded and all minutes must be made available to the public as soon as possible and as reasonable. Now, interestingly, under the previous law and now under guidance provided by the Committee on Open Government, which is the governing board in the state of New York regarding both open meetings matters and freedom of information law matters, they've opined that if a member wishes to use a remote location and allow public access to that particular location. So let me use it as an example, since the state of Florida is a popular destination for New Yorkers and people in general, especially during the colder months. Let's say a town board member is staying at a condominium down in Florida. If they allow the public to physically come in to their kitchen table during the actual town board meeting and allow the public to sit in with notice of that location and full access. So that means they got to be able to get by the gate, for example, in a condo community, right? Apparently, that town board member, based on the current law, would not only be able to participate, but they would also count for quorum purposes, which is an interesting thing, right? So you'd still be able to count both quorum-wise, deliberation-wise, and voting-wise with regard to that particular issue.
Do they have to be Riverhead residents?
They do not. Members of the public is wide open.
At large.
That is correct.
Wow.
As with our meeting, somebody could walk in from New York City, California, Florida, to sit in on any meeting. Members of the public are not defined other than being members.
In this case, at your condominium in Florida and you invited your neighbors over, that might satisfy the need?
It would have to be open to all members of the public, councilman.
Yeah, regardless who they are.
Literally, the public notice would say, if you go to a house party. Councilman Frank Bayrod, right?
Yeah, you better buy plenty of coffee.
Yeah. Councilman Frank Bayrod, right, is part of a video conference down at this location, and members of the public can access it via this location.
Okay.
That is correct. And you can think about it in this term, right? So any member of the public can walk in and sit down here, right? We don't ask where they're from. We don't ask what their interest is. That's the purpose of transparency in government and how it works.
But if we don't give public notices to where we are to keep it open, to have it open, it would be private. But we can't count as a quorum, but we can still participate in vote.
That's correct, as long as that meeting is still open by video conferencing to members of the public.
Okay.
That's absolutely true. And it's important at this point to reiterate and note, the town board has provided video conferencing for months now. Based on our technology, we were one of the first towns, if not the first, that kept those meetings open based on our technology and our ability to live stream. Who knew, right, in 2016, when we negotiated that contract, that that would have such a benefit now, and it did. So as long as we allow and afford the members of the public to observe by video conferencing, open meetings law is satisfied. So if you folks continue to wish and allow the public to come in by video conferencing, that doesn't change. You're just affording the public another avenue. Open meetings law directs the town board and the public body members as to their locations.
So Dan, just to confirm, we were the first to go, and I believe we were the first to go back online in person.
Yes.
And we were at meetings throughout, the entire board was at meetings, and we were the first to also have open up town hall.
That's correct.
So we actually did very well in that respect. This is an enhanced open meetings law legislation to engage the public, and it's a no-brainer. I know that the state has provided us with a resolution, and the resolution is up, and we might want to consider adopting. I know it has to go through code, and it has to be a public hearing. How does the board feel about it?
I'd be in favor of adopting the local law and keeping it going the way it is with video conference. And I think it's convenient for people, especially for sometimes our two o'clock meetings, if they can't physically make it here, they can still watch and participate.
And it also.
And it also allows us as board members, if we're at a conference or somewhere else, that we could still participate and, you know, be part of the meeting, so.
And it also would assist with the seniors who may not be able to get here.
Can't get around.
And the disabled and possibly due to the weather. So it really enhances.
Sure. Certainly, if we have a bad flu season as well, right?
Correct.
And COVID has shown us that having remote access is a great benefit from a public health standpoint.
So anyone else want to add?
I'm fine with continuing to do both for the reasons Tim stated.
Dinner.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so with the board's permission, I will draft the appropriate paperwork, and I'll submit it accordingly.
I have one question about it, though, Dan. Is there a requirement for the amount of people on Zoom? So if there's one person on Zoom, we keep Zoom? No requirement there, or we just?
That is correct. So if we have one or more members via video conferencing, we must make that available to the public, whether it's one person or a thousand people. That is correct.
I hope your condo is pretty good, pretty big.
No one's on it.
It's Florida.
That's correct. If we have one member, that's correct, right? So those will be open.
All right. Well, I thank you for, I know I called you Monday on this, and we got, turned it around full circle by Thursday. So good work in there. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I'll draft the appropriate statutory provisions.
Great. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Tim Hubbard, who's going to introduce members of the Riverhead Volunteer Ambulance Corporation who are here today to discuss possible changes in their billing structure. Tim, can you take it from there, please?
Yeah, Pat Gugliotta and Garrett Lake, would you guys come up to the table? What this is about is presently, the ambulance corps has been billing for motor vehicle accidents in the town of Riverhead.
Good morning.
If they respond and do a transport to a motor vehicle accident, they can submit to the insurance company, the victim's insurance company, to get reimbursed for payment for that call. What we're here to discuss today is, as many ambulance corps have done on Long Island, they've gone to full billing, and full billing means that any ADKs, if a transport is needed, they would be able to bill again through the insurance companies. If you read the article on Riverhead Local recently, Flanders has been doing it for quite some time, and it just, it popped up with a little bit of a problem because people are concerned they were getting bills, and they were paying the bills out of their own pocket, and that's not how this is going to be set up. This is set up to get money from the insurance companies only. So if you should need a transport, and you go to the hospital and you get discharged or whatever, you receive a bill somewhere down the road for that transport from the ambulance company, you as an individual do not pay that bill. It gets submitted through the insurance company, through the company that does this work for us. They submit it to the insurance company, and they get paid through that. We're not looking to collect from anybody. We don't want anybody to feel that they could never call an ambulance because they can't afford to pay for the ambulance ride. That's not what it is. The long-term goal in this is to provide more revenue for the ambulance company, simply because, especially since COVID, the price increases of materials, of first aid supplies, medicines, rubber gloves, everything has tripled, quadrupled. It's putting a burden on the town to have to raise taxes in order to maintain the ambulance company. And that's something we certainly are always going to do, is maintain an ambulance company. But this would give some relief to the taxpayer if there are other sources of revenues that can be brought in by charging, because all your insurance companies, whether it be health insurance or your car insurance, all have coverage for this type of transport. So it's not affecting anybody. You're not going to, it's not coming out of your own pocket. The insurance companies are set up. That's why we pay all this high price for car insurance and health insurance. It's all built into the policies. So we would by no means accept a personal check or cash from somebody looking to come in or looking to pay if they receive something in the mail. Also, it's referred to as soft collection. Hard collection would be, if you don't pay that bill, you know, your credit rating gets nicked. That absolutely would not happen here. There is no collections. There's, there's nobody going to have, be taken to collections because they couldn't pay for an ambulance ride. So you should never, ever be afraid to call the ambulance. You are not personally going to be charged. It would be done simply from the, from the insurance companies. And with that, I'll turn it over. We have Pat Gugliotta.
Gugliotta, that's awesome.
Hi.
The district manager of Riverhead Ambulance, and we have Garrett Lake, the president of Riverhead Ambulance. And I'll turn it over to you guys, and you've brought some information about what projections could be, so.
Yeah, just, just really quickly, we thank you guys for having us. We've been billing now car insurance for about five years. To this date, I'm proud to say that we have not one complaint from a citizen. You know, the way we set up our billing, you know, with the town lawyers and our lawyers really made it straightforward. You know, everybody in the public, you know, they do get a bill sometimes for their copays, and that would come out every 30, 60, and 90 days. After the 90 days, it's our policy with the town that we would then write that off. So we do not go after people. We do not send them a bill after the 90 days, and that's it. That's the end of it.
The biggest thing out of the Flanders article that I read was lack of public knowledge of this. So it would have to be something that we would really have to promote townwide and make sure that people understand if they do get a bill for 30, 60, or 90 days, that they do not pay it. And we have to do our best to get that information out so the general public knows.
Yes, but, you know, we also have to make sure that we have to, per the law, at least make a good effort attempt.
Correct.
So that, that was another issue that I saw in that article. You have to at least make an attempt, or Medicare and Medicaid will then have a problem. So that's where we, you know, we excel, is that we at least make the attempt, right? So we're not knocking on anybody's door. We're not making any phone calls. We're sending them the three letters after that. We look at it at the end of the year, whatever our policy that we came up with the town is. We review them. We look at them, and then we, we write them off. Obviously, you guys know that if any crime is committed, we don't get reimbursed for that, so those are typically written off, too, you know.
So I think you're going to need to start a marketing campaign to inform the public.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We would have to assist with that in terms of either mailings or, or, you know, obviously, we're on live TV now, but we have to do much more than that, the local press for sure. And then we have to maybe put together some type of mailing to go out to the residents of the town.
How about an ad possibly?
An ad possibly, too, in one of the papers.
And the news review for the seniors, so they can see it, because a lot of seniors, that might be.
Mailings, we know they'll get them. Not everybody buys the newspaper, but it's a good idea. I get that.
Well, we also got the, the members of Riverhead Ambulance are also obviously embedded in the community, so they're going to be talking it up as well. So we'll make sure that all of our members are on the same page when it comes to how to actually explain it to people so there's no misunderstandings, because the last thing we want is anybody to have questions that are, that go unanswered. And then they come to you guys or they come to us already aggravated because they didn't get an answer. So we want to, just like you guys said, have some sort of campaign going forward, making sure that everybody's on the same page, and we have questions and answers posted, so anybody who has questions will be on the same page as all of us.
Tim and Pat, can you put together some type of flyer, and we can put it on our website?
Yeah, well, if, I mean, if this is what we actually do, yes.
Yes.
We would certainly do that. We've had conversations through the year with all the financial parties involved, and we've really took a look at what Riverhead Ambulance needs to provide the best service to the community. And I think we all agree that we would have to raise the taxes quite, quite a bit. We would be blowing through the 2% tax cap, and it would put hardship on some of our elderly community. So that's why, yeah, myself, Bill Rothar, our people, we discussed, you know, this is not a new thing. Billing is now legal. The fire departments can do it if they want to. You know, it's money that you're paying anyway when you pay your insurance premium, so you might as well use it to help, you know, get what we need to, to supply the best service for Riverhead. Riverhead has gotten very big, very fast, and, you know, for the good, you know, but we need to have the funding to, you know, have the staffing, so.
You just could give an example of like what gloves used to be and what they are now, or some of the supplies.
Sure. We used to pay $24 for a box of gloves pre-COVID, and now we are paying $82 a box of gloves post-COVID.
And that's just one item. You go through a lot of gloves. I get that.
And we wear gloves every, I probably myself go through 15 or 20 pair of gloves a day. That's just me. So the fluids, the saline's, we're all on, we were on allocation. We couldn't even order what we needed. We were only given a certain amount every month because it wasn't around. And of course, supply and demand kicks in, and all of the prices increased drastically. So the, not to mention the fuel and all the other costs that exponentially went up with COVID as well. And you get all these fuel surcharges on oxygen deliveries even, and then when the fuel goes back down to $3.50 a gallon, somehow that fuel surcharge still stays there. I don't know how that happens. But so our expenses went up drastically over the last two years. And the best option for us, nobody wants to do the billing, right? It's just nobody wants to do it, but it's the really low-hanging fruit for us, and it's a good option for us to bring in extra revenue without actually costing the residents any money as far as tax revenue goes.
It's almost a necessary evil, unfortunately.
You know, and just with equipment, you know, you look at the other emergency services around, you know, the fire, police, and all those. They're governed by you guys, you know, they're governed by their people, but we're governed by multiple different things, you know? The DOH, all those different agencies, and we have time restraints of replacing ambulances, you know? The ambulances are $200,000 to $400,000 a piece, and right now, you can't get them. So we ordered a first responder car, and we've been waiting over 250 days so far, and it hasn't even made the line. You know, we have another responder car supposed to be due in another couple of months, you know, and these cars are jumping in price now. Now they're, you know, $20,000 more than what we budgeted. So we're going to run into a very big problem with our reserve accounts, you know, funding this stuff in the future. And that's, you know, we don't like running anywhere near the, you know, under where we need to be. We want to make sure we have the money and not have to come to you guys and say, hey, we're out of money, so.
Because we also realize you guys are not sitting on a big pile of cash, just waiting for us to come and ask for it. So when we have to come and ask you guys for money for equipment, we know that you guys have to scramble to try to figure out where that money's going to come from now as well. So we don't, we don't want to be in that position, and we certainly don't want to put you guys in that position. So I think even on some of the low estimates, do you guys all have?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Even on the low estimates, it would drastically increase the revenue, excuse me, that we could bring in, which would also allow us to do some of the longer-term projects that have been set aside for the last 10 or 15 years, like getting a new piece of property or a building or something for the equipment that we have down the road. So I think that as much as no one wants to go to billing, I don't think it's going to impact the community at all, and obviously, we'll have to get that out there because they're already paying the premiums on the insurance. So all it's really going to do is it's going to help the taxpayers. It's going to help you guys better fund us, and it's going to help us get what we need in order to serve this community.
Pat, why wasn't this done in the past?
Because it wasn't, I don't think, up until now, or up until like last year, it really wasn't needed. We were kind of doing the best we can with what we had, and there was a stigma around the billing. We don't want to charge the residents. They're already paying taxes for ambulance service. We don't want to double build up. Last year, or the beginning of this year, New York State is one of the last states in the country that allowed fire departments to actually bill for ambulance services. So once that came out, the town of Islip told all of their ambulance corps, you're going to bill because we just don't have the money to keep giving you guys. They didn't want to do it, but the town made them do it to bring in extra revenues. And now, from my understanding, it's working out very well with the ambulance corps over there. So it's kind of a trickle-down effect, and it's all coming full circle. And I think that there's only so many places you can grab money from, and the premiums are being paid on the insurances already, whether it's car insurance or health insurance.
Sure.
So if the insurance companies don't pay out, they get to keep the money, and we're still over here struggling. So I think that's why it hasn't been done yet, and I think we're at a point where now we've scraped and scratched every penny that we can, and there's just no more, nowhere else to grab it from.
And I think the board at the time, you know, I think being on the board, we were, everybody was a little nervous about it, including the town board. You know, it was something new. It was something that we didn't know we were prepared to do. We wanted to make sure there were no issues with it, and the easiest route to do legally was to do the one side of the insurance. So you can't do, you know, you can't just do one or the other. You have to pick. The car insurance was the only one we could do without having to do the rest, so. And I'm glad we did do it because, you know, we know what it's about. We know what we need to do it. We have the infrastructure to do it. It's just personnel. You know, as we all know, we've had this conversation in mind about how, you know, Jamesport really needs the coverage, and we've done that, right? We, you guys gave us the extra money. We put staff, but Jamesport needs staff all the time. You know, this, the township is just way too big now. We need to have resources in all locations, and this, this funding will instantly help that. By next year, if we, if we started this in January, by next year, talking to Bill Rothar, we would definitely be able to fund staffing in Jamesport a lot more than we're doing now. You know, right now, we're just doing the pumpkin picking season, which has been a tremendous asset to us. As you guys know, the traffic out there is crazy, but we'll see instant results from it, you know? The first year will be the, probably the lowest intake, but as you guys see the numbers, you know, even if we only brought in 800,000 in the first year, that's multiple crews and, you know, that, that's putting us over a wall.
It goes a long way to service the community.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if the public completely understands. You're a volunteer ambulance corps made up of volunteers. Approximately how many?
We're over 100.
Over 100. And even that's not enough. We still have to supplement because of the call volume that you have. We supplement with paid paramedics to also assist in the calls because you're doing between 12 and 15 calls on some days.
Doing a lot more than that.
Yeah, a lot more than that. That's a low day. That's a slow day.
So Riverhead Volunteer Ambulance is one of the last agencies that actually implements as many volunteers as they do. The volunteers at Riverhead Ambulance run the Riverhead Ambulance from 6:00 PM to midnight with no paid staff. So we have no expenses as far as paid staff goes, and I don't know of any other ambulance corps on Long Island, Nassau or Suffolk County, that is able to do that still with their volunteers. They just don't have them. So the volunteers that are out here are outstanding. We do roughly about 5,500 calls a year right now. We're doing sometimes 26 to 30 calls a day, and it just, it just isn't enough. The volunteers obviously have to work, right? So the paid staff is there during the day, and the paid staff that we have, we still need help. Because I, sometimes during the day, I got to bring myself, the logistics people I have, whatever resources we have available to make sure that everything is getting covered. And we're doing it. It's just, it's getting more and more difficult to do.
You know, with, with the funding, you know, Riverhead, the size it is, we really should be, we shouldn't depend on anybody else. You know, we should be depending on ourselves and ourselves only. And with this extra funding, you know, if we staff one more ambulance during the day, we won't have to mutilate anyone. We'll be handling everything ourselves. There will be no calling, you know, Flanders for additional, additional ambulance. There'll be no calling Mottetalk, Whitting River, or any of those. We'll be handling everything. You know, because right now, we're staffing three ambulances during the day with Pat jumping on the ambulance. And, you know, when you do 24 calls in a day, you just don't have, you run out of people. So, you know, with this funding, if we put one more ambulance on, you know, having one come from Jamesport, for instance, you know, you'd be covering pretty much the whole, the whole Riverhead town and having coverage which would be 10 minutes away, you know?
Pat touched briefly on this, but one of the needs is a new ambulance headquarters, and we know we're going to have to do something with that. Unless your rigs are out on a call, if you go past your head. Unless your rigs are out on a call, if you go past your headquarters, there's always at least one ambulance sitting outside.
Right now, we have two responders, two ambulances, and, uh, the Polaris and the Gator all outside. And the problem is the sun is killing the electronics on the inside of the vehicle.
And, and you have medication inside these rigs, it need to be temperature controlled, and sitting outside is probably the worst thing they could be.
It is both in summer and winter.
But in bringing in money from doing the full collections, this is going to help that come to fruition sooner than later.
That's what we're hoping, yes.
You know, COVID was a, a huge wake-up call to us, you know? We realize that we are behind the eight ball when it comes to infectious disease, because there's no place.
Everybody else.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, we're not the only one, I mean, it's, everybody.
Hospitals, everything.
Everybody realized that their ambulance bays, their ready rooms, they're not set up the way they should be. There's no place to get out of an ambulance and safely decontaminate yourself before you go into the rest of the building. And that's what we realized, we're like, oh my God, you know, this is one of those things, and that's, you know, you can't have your only EMS personnel, because with COVID, we were, we were close to running out of EMS personnel, you know, once the, they said, hey, you can't come back to work for two weeks, we almost had a problem, and then they were like, wait a minute, if you don't have symptoms, you can still go back to work. But in our building, there's no place to put those people that may have been sick but could still work, to keep them away from everybody else, you know? You have to go through the living quarters, the shower, there's no sleeping quarters, so it's just, these things are, that we've been talking about forever. You know, the money that we get here, if projected appropriately, should be able to cover a debt service on, on any building that we would put there.
Well, kudos to our, our, any healthcare worker. I know the hospital is struggling in maintaining nursing staff, uh, because once some of these people went through this, they realized what the risk they were putting themselves into, and maybe they realized that wasn't quite what they wanted. So a lot have left that, uh, profession. But bigger kudos to the volunteers who aren't getting paid, but they were still suiting up and going out and transporting COVID patients. You know, we all saw it on the news, the suits and everything with the mask, and, you know, uh, it was scary. And, and you're not even getting paid to do this, you know, that's, that's hats off to all of our volunteers for sure.
You know, like, and like Pat said, we, you know, we do have a lot of volunteers, and we do cover our own shift, so. We're one of the last, I think, in the, in the county of Suffolk that still has, you know, a complete volunteer tour, so.
I have a question, uh, so when would this start? You, I heard you say January, is there any reason why you wouldn't start this, like, right away?
Well, we have to start, we have, so we apply, have to apply for our Medicare, Medicaid, um, um, numbers. And then once we apply for those, then we can backbill for 60 days, but we made it this far, we don't want to rush anything and rush into something and then have to kind of backtrack. So we want to, we have the billing company that we currently use right now is an outstanding billing company. And, um, with, with the fire departments going full billing now, you can imagine how many bill, billing companies popped up overnight that are just trying to rake the fire departments over the calls. I've seen some companies charging 9% on the annual revenue that they're bringing in. Our company has, um, we've been working with them for a long time, and they are not changing the percentage on us, even though the billing is going to drastically increase.
What's that percentage?
Three, uh, 3% or 4%, so it's, it's the lowest one I've seen out there.
It's 3.5, currently.
I'm sorry, 3.5, so, um, and they've made a commitment to us not to change it, and, um, we have a great relationship with them. So before we kind of jump in with both feet, we want to make sure that all of our ducks are in the rope, so we don't get ourselves into a jam. So that, in a long drawn out answer, that's, answers your question is, the reason why we want to wait until January.
And honestly, we're halfway through September, and we need a PR campaign too, to notify the public, and January's not that far away.
That's why we pushed to have this meeting, because, you know, we're going to need, there's going to be some staffing, uh, changes that are going to have to happen on our end, and the PR is going to be the biggest thing. We have to give the public at least a couple of months to ask the question.
We have Channel 22, uh, is there any reason, and the library, I think would be a good resource, if you do, you know, the flyer, the supervisor, so we can get it up on Facebook, and we certainly could all share it on our own feeds. Is there any reason why we couldn't put this, like, on the back of the recreation department? They, they do a mailer all the time, does everybody?
It just came out, and the next one won't be out until the springtime, so.
I mean.
Great idea, and we, we should include it with it when it does come out.
So moving forward, we could do that as well, so to keep reminding the residents and new residents that come in?
Maybe we can work with the assessors office and send that notice with the tax bills.
That's a really.
That way you know it's, everybody's receiving it.
That's a really good one.
Because everybody looks at their tax bills.
I have two, two questions to make sure that. So first one is, um, so if I'm transported by ambulance to the hospital, my insurance covers it, I have a copay, I will receive a bill for the copay, and basically what you're telling me is it's, it's almost like a suggested donation.
So you'll receive three bills for the copay, you'll receive one at 30 days, one at 90 days, I'm sorry, 60 days, and then one at 90 days. And then once it is, it is left unpaid, we have a write-off policy that, um, Dan was instrumental in helping us, uh, uh, do last year, um, that, that will most likely fall, we'll have to review that, but it will most likely fall into the write-off policy. So we'll take the money from the insurance company, we're not worried about your 30 bucks or 70 bucks or whatever it is.
How, how, what's the requirement when you're sending out that bill 30, 60, 90 days? I, my only thought is that I pay the bill and, and another person doesn't pay the bill because they thought they were obligated, they thought it would go to collection or something like that? Who designs the wording in the bill that says that, you know, that you're not ob, you're not, would it say you're not obligated to pay? Or does it, is that not legal to say you're not obligated?
I don't think we can say that legally.
Because that would not be making a good faith attempt to collect.
Yeah, we have to at least make a good faith attempt to collect that money. So, you know, it, it's basically, it's part of the campaign of telling people, listen, if you can, I mean, you listen, you're, you are obligated to make your, to pay your copay, and we all know that, but we don't want the elderly community or the people that don't have the funding to fall behind and not eat. I think that's really what it comes down to, so, you know, we're not, if they can't pay it, they need to know that, you know, if you go to the supermarket and get your, your dinner for the night, then pay that.
So the second thing then, I just wanted to point out is, with your budget for next year, I think that, you know, I, I think that the funds that have collected this really should be, uh, minimalized in your budget, meaning that you, your budget should include low numbers, because I don't know how long will it take to start receiving payments from the, from the insurance companies? Are they going to be, you know, three, six, nine months out? And I hope that your budget is not going to be relying on this the first year.
Yeah, our first year will.
That you can, you know, that perhaps this will be more towards funds that can be applied and could be readjusted, you know, in, in the secondary year, 30, based on the percentage, what you know you're really getting, but I just would caution that we're not relying on, we're going to get these insurance checks right away.
Right, so we've submitted our budget for next year already, and we sat with, um, Bill Rothar, and, um, the, the budget that we have now doesn't include any of this billing, because this isn't even, right. It's not even approved right now, so we can't anticipate money that we may not even be doing.
We started the budget process, we're a little bit more than halfway through, and I know you guys have been working with Bill, and
Yes.
No, I don't think anybody should make the assumption that we're gonna.
No, because we can always adjust it next year, once we see the money coming in and see what it actually is, we can make adjustments like we had to do this year with our budget, right? We had to make an adjustment, uh, because we had some shortfalls, and you guys were, uh, kind enough to, uh, make sure that we didn't have the shortfalls and gave us the extra money that we needed. Um, so next year, once we have the extra money coming in, then we could sit down and start to reallocate stuff accordingly.
Building funds.
That would be an outstanding idea.
All right, guys.
Right, and on that point, I know Bill is here, Bill wants to speak to you, but I know Bill and I have spoken about that, so Bill has taken that under consideration in terms of formulating a structure that will be user friendly for all parties in terms of that additional funding as we go forward.
And I, I do think we do have, there might be, I don't, Bill could probably answer more, but I think we do have a little bit of the billing money from, you know, the MBAs that could probably be used early on in the beginning of the year to help offset paid staff and that.
Yeah, whatever's in that account, we can work that out.
If we're going to be doing the full billing, then we could.
Well, you have, you have a project before, before you.
We do.
Right, just to clarify, right, at this point, I just want to be absolutely certain, right? It's the board's intention to go forward with full billing regarding all AD cases in the town of Riverhead, correct?
Yes.
That would be major medical, Medicare, Medicaid, correct?
Yes, it is, Dan.
Yes, for me.
Yes.
That is great, and I, I appreciate you doing your due diligence with Islip, and I think that's smart.
No problem, we have friends, obviously, we, you know, talk to everybody.
Sure.
Um, and I have actually one of the chiefs from one of the ambulance corps in Islip that works for me over here in Riverhead. And, um, I talked to him a lot about it, because they started it last year, um, and it's Brentwood Legion, they do about 9,000 calls a year, so they're probably double what we do. But, um, the revenue that they're anticipating is, um, what they brought in this year is probably a fraction of what they're anticipating for next year, because they worked out all the kinks. So I'm trying to learn from their mistakes, so I don't make those same ones. So I like to talk to people about how things work, so we can try to anticipate some of the stuff and avoid some of the stuff they've already been through.
Correct, we do know that Medicare and Medicaid has very specific procedural guidelines and requirements, so that's something.
It's going to take some training for the personnel, um, and, you know, ways to document and things like that. So it definitely is a progress, a process, and January timeframe will give us the next few months to be able to take care of all of that.
Great, thank you.
So why, why you have?
No, I just wanted to echo some of the sentiment we heard earlier, but thank you so much for everything you do and the volunteers. It's incredible that we still have a, a hundred that care enough about the community, and I, I couldn't thank you enough. The citizens of the, of the town of Riverhead, thank you too.
Thank you, absolutely.
So while you're at the table, thank you, but, um, it's a separate topic of discussion, but do we have a contract yet in place?
For?
With Riverhead Ambulance?
No, we don't, it's still being reviewed.
So I, I hope that that can be a topic of a work session rather, rather soon, so that we can finalize that, because we do really appreciate all of your work, thank you both.
Thank you.
Well, concerning the contractual, we are going to go into contractual negotiations with all the unions, the PBA, the SOA, the CEA, uh, we're in the budget process now, and, um, I know you have a good relationship with Bill.
Yeah, I talk to Bill all the time, probably more than he would like, but, uh.
And e- even if it's, uh, the contract is not, um, signed, which usually they take a lo- long time. Sometimes he is, especially here in the past.
Well, we're out for two years right now.
But you always get retro pay, so it's not like people, or our contract is not signed, um, so we'll, we'll take care of the contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we have you guys in a public forum here, we would like to thank you guys for the, uh, purchase of the old train vehicle that we took delivery of two months ago, um, it's finally on the road, it's already.
I can't wait to see it, I heard it has a lot of likes.
It's already made its first rescue on the beach, so.
Actually made two.
Actually, yeah, two rescues on the beach, um, so it's, uh, definitely going out there, and, and, you know, we got a few more things we have to do with it, and also thank you for, uh, getting the generator approved for the building.
Yep, they just ripped the bushes out today, so they're working on that, so.
That was long overdue.
Yes, thank you guys very much.
That whole thing was just ticking away on its last legs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
You have a work.
Appreciate all that you do.
Thank you guys for having us.
And be safe. Thank you, everyone, and, uh, this concludes our discussion items for today. Uh, Devin, can you please come forward and read the resolutions?
Good morning.
Good morning, Devin.
Ready?
Good morning. Can't hear you, though.
Can't hear me.
Now we can.
Okay. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Resolution number one, approve special event chapter 255 application for East End Rowing Snowflake Regatta. Resolution number two, appoints a call-in recreation aide. Number three, adopts a local law amending chapter 211, section 14, article 3 of Riverhead Town Code entitled Parking and Permits Related to Use of Recreation Centers and Facilities, Parks, Playgrounds, Public Bathing Beaches, and Dog Parks, subsection B1 entitled Seasonal Resident Parking Permit. Number four, ratifies the termination of a probationary employee. Number five, awards rebid for restoration of cupola at George Young Community Center.
Finally.
Yeah, that's a good one, yep.
Yeah.
Number six.
I can't believe the amount of money for that project, I, when I look at what it's cost, what it, the cost is for doing that, and I think back, when I built my house, I built my house for $95,000, and this is just a cupola being redone for in excess of $160,000, but that was 30 years ago, I.
Don't date yourself.
Digress here, but. Yeah, yeah, it's just amazing.
Okay, resolution number six, awards bid for 2023 or newer chassis, 10-foot 304 stainless steel dump body, custom low-mound hitch, 10-foot stainless steel material spreader, 11-foot snowplow and central hydraulics. Number seven, awards bid for chipper box truck. Number eight, approves the attendance of one police department employee to the DCJS Public Safety Symposium. Number nine, ambulance district budget adjustment. Number 10, general fund budget transfer for prior year. Number 11, general fund budget transfer. Number 12, Zenith Building Water Capital Project number 82219 budget adoption. Number 13, Tana Riverhead requests to County of Suffolk for approval and sale of certain real property owned by the County of Suffolk described as Suffolk County Tax Map numbers District 600, section 128, block 5, lots 1 and 2, located at Griving Avenue, Tana Riverhead, Suffolk County, New York pursuant to 72H of the general, general municipal law.
What is this about?
This is a, this is a lot that the county owns, and they partnership, partnered with us to help build, um, the TOD, and they'll build it, we're going to purchase it, and then we're going to build, um, I believe, uh, three level, four level parking garage.
I, what, actually, what I should have asked, where exactly is this piece of property on Riverhead Avenue?
It's, it's right across from the courthouse, uh, you know, the old courthouse.
Yeah.
There, we, there's a parking lot there.
Gotcha, okay.
So, and actually, the county contacted us and offered, they wanted to partner with us and be part of the TOD development, and they offered, uh, offered it to us, so, so it's great, with people working together, all the parts of government, which is great.
Number 14, authorizes town clerk to publish and post a public notice for a public hearing regarding an alleged unsafe structure located at 46 East Second Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-128-5-31 pursuant to chapter 217, part 4 of the Riverhead Town Code.
Now, this is the, uh, the home on Second Street that burned, and, um, they were trying to take it down. It was just recently declared as unsafe, and so we're moving forward with the resolution. If the owner does not take it down, um, we will, uh, take it down, and then.
Put it on their tax bill.
Put it on their tax bill, they have to pay us. We did get word a couple of days ago that the owner claimed to be in contract with someone to take it down. However, we should still move forward in case it doesn't happen and start this process again.
The check's been in the mail many times in situations like this, but it never shows up, so.
The house wasn't insured apparently, so.
Oh boy.
Yeah.
Okay, resolution 15, extends agreement for landfill monitoring. Number 16, authorizes town clerk to publish and post request for proposals for landfill maintenance and monitoring. And just to clarify, if anybody's thinking the same thing I was thinking, the reason we're extending the agreement and then thereafter going out, uh, for an RFP is because we need to just bridge the gap. The, the RFP, uh, results won't come in, I, my understanding is till November, so by the time we can process those and get the new folks in place, we just need to extend the agreement with the existing folks to bridge the gap.
Got it.
Resolution 17, authorizes town clerk to publish and post bid for removal of household hazardous waste. And resolution 18, amends resolution 2022-77 approving special event chapter 255 application for racetrack, not street at Epcal 2022 Fall Classic.
I just have a question on that, they originally over at the one runway, and then they switched back? I thought it was because somebody else had rights to that runway, so what has changed now that they can go back?
My understanding is we're just, uh, distinguishing the, which runway they're going to be using, but Eric will expand upon that.
Yeah, and the shortening, it apparently had to do with the automobiles.
Yeah, this is just, this is, the, the resolutions that were passed back in January addressed the 10,000-foot runway. This simply amends that January resolution to clarify that it's the 7,000-foot runway.
Yep, they just changed.
That's where they are now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you, Devin. Uh, we have no other items on the agenda at the moment, and, um, it's, uh, one week left to, uh, summer. I hope everyone enjoys the weekend, it looks like it's going to be great. And, um, can I have a first and a second to close this, uh, work session, please? Can I have a second? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move, stay safe, enjoy your weekend.